Good morning Leader.
Good morning, thank you Nigel. Good morning everyone, my name is Captain Martin Bell with the County Council. This remote meeting which is the first of, not the first for the County Council but the first executive meeting done remotely. As I'm sure everybody will understand that with the coronavirus outbreak and the social distancing rules, it has not been possible to have formal meetings of the council up till very recently. So it has been, we've put different measures into place and obviously in essence we've made decisions on a more swift basis shall we say. And I'd like particularly to thank Debbie Barnes, our Chief Executive who between myself and her we've actually managed to do a lot of work but also take those decisions so that the business of the County Council can carry on and we can continue to deliver those services. So I think the first thing that's going to happen now then is we're going to, do we start with apologies? I think we'll do a roll call of who is present, including apologies for absence. So I'll hand back over to Cheryl who will now call out the names of all those present. I think you're muted Cheryl.
Sorry Leader, just to introduce myself, I am Cheryl Levens and I'm a Democratic Services Officer. Could members of the Executive, other councillors and officers please confirm they are present when their name is called? Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Present.
Councillor Davy.
Present.
Councillor Davis.
Good morning everybody.
Councillor Poll.
Yeah.
Councillor Mrs Woolley.
Present.
Councillor Worth.
Present.
Councillor Young.
Present.
Councillor Wotton who is Vice Chairman of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board.
Present.
Debbie Barnes, Chief Executive.
Present.
Les Britzman, Chief Fire Officer.
Present.
Andrew Crookham, Executive Director for Resources.
Present.
James Drury, Executive Director for Commercial.
Present.
Glenn Garrard, Executive Director, Adult Care and Community Wellbeing.
Good morning.
Heather Sandy, Executive Director of Children's Services.
Present.
And Nigel West, Head of Democratic Services. Leader, we have received apologies for absence from Andy Gubson, Executive Director of Place.
Thank you very much, so that completes the roll call. So the next item then on the agenda is any declarations of interest by any councillor. I'll take it then from the silence, there are no declarations, so I will then move on to Agenda Item 3, which is announcements by myself or other members of the Executive. So I'll go around each of the Executive in a minute just so we can all give an update on the activity which has been happening since the coronavirus outbreak occurred. So in terms of the County Council, obviously it's been a massive effort for all of us, not only changing the way that many of us do our work where possible and working remotely, but also most importantly to keep all those important services, vital services going. For example, care and highways issues as well. And I'm pleased to say despite all the disruption both to the community but also to individual people who work for the council, I'm very pleased to say that all those vital services have continued and have continued in good form. I would also say that of course we have had to stop and amend many of the other services, for example libraries and household recycling centres, things like that. They've obviously had to stop for obvious reasons. And also we've also diverted many staff to do different things because to rise to the challenge of all the different issues we've got to deal with. In particular those people who are clinically vulnerable, the very vulnerable, the shielded group as the government calls them, to make sure they are supportive. Then there are the other vulnerable group, less vulnerable should I say, but still vulnerable, also supporting them as well. And indeed anybody else who because they're isolated needs support and help because they haven't got a network of support around them. We are literally talking about thousands of interactions, hundreds of voluntary groups have set up and we've been supporting those as well. And there have been thousands of interactions with people to make sure that everyone is being looked after properly and is also being informed about what is going on. And again, that's been a big communications effort as well and which I believe in the most part has gone pretty well. And I think also we've also had to obviously work with partners and we are probably one of the major lead authorities in terms of what the nation and the government requires us to do. So it's up to us to work with those other partners in the NHS, with district councils and the like, and indeed the voluntary sector and the care sector and the police to make sure we are all coordinated and we're all doing, supporting each other to make sure we can all get through this very difficult period. I'm pleased to say that in Lincolnshire the numbers of incidents of coronavirus and indeed deaths have been very low. I think we're nearly the lowest, second, one of the lowest in the country, which is really good news for us. I think being a rural, remote county in a sense in this instance has worked to our advantage. So again, that has been very good. I know everybody across the public sector as a whole has been working very, very hard and working together to make us do that. And of course the public have played their part as well in terms of helping us to get through this. And obviously as we look to the future, as we're about to start the unlocking of some of the restrictions, the County Council then have a, will have a big job on because as we all know I think it's relatively easy to switch things off but far more complicated to do them. So I would actually like to pay tribute to all the people who have continued to do all that work, all the people who have continued to do their work, who work for the County Council, indeed at some risks sometimes to themselves but they've carried on. So what I'll do now is I'll go around the Executive and I'll let them just update us all on in their area how they've got on. So I'll start with my Deputy Leader, Councillor Bradwell, who is in charge, who oversees children's services, adults and public health.
Thank you Leader, and I would echo what you've just said. Our staff have really stepped up to the mark in changing what they normally do in children's services. We've had lots of staff moving from their day job into helping our residential care sector, our respite homes and many other things, which is truly amazing and they've helped keep services going. The vast majority, just moving on to vast majority of our schools have remained open and offering education for vulnerable children and key workers. In fact, we've really done more and more of our schools have been open. Thirteen percent of vulnerable children have been attending school, which isn't a lot but across the country that's only been five. So our work and social workers and that are really encouraging vulnerable children to get, go to school and I hope that will increase. One of the, one of the things that we're doing at the moment is working with the Department of Education on the rollout of IT equipment to young people across our schools. And we're asking schools to report in the children that they feel just need this equipment. Again, the, the children who don't want to go to school, obviously parents are keeping children away. And obviously we wait and we're working now to get, understand how we'll be opening up our schools from the 1st of June and obviously working with transport services because obviously the school transport has very nearly stopped. So those things will now are a key part of what we're trying to do with offices to get things back opened up as the Leader has said. Just moving on to adult care, obviously public health have been working very closely with health services and that over the period of time. And obviously we hear a lot about PPE and I think there was a shortage at the beginning of the coronavirus. But actually now I'm advised, you know, that we have got enough PPE if residential cares sector and the home care sector do require that. Our wellbeing service, as we've worked very closely with our district council colleagues and that's enabled us to respond and flex to the change in the services that we've needed to provide to those vulnerable people and the people who have to self-isolate because of medical reasons. And that really has worked very well. We've really worked well in partnership with our district colleagues. And I just wanted to say a little about home care providers in the residential sector. I mean, they have done a fantastic job in supporting people. The hospitals have been discharging very quickly as we can appreciate people don't want to stay in hospital too long. But actually at a moment's notice, we've been having to provide fine care placements in the residential sector and home care support. And on a daily basis in normal times, that isn't an easy thing to do. But our home care providers and our residential providers have really, really worked well with us in, you know, going that extra mile. So I do believe that, you know, we have had an amazing staff group who have actually have stepped up to the mark and definitely I can say in my areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much Councillor Bradwell. So I'll go through it alphabetically. So I'll now ask Councillor Colin Davy, who is the Executive Member for, Executive Councillor for Economy and Place to give us an update.
Thank you Leader, and I too would like to echo your comments of congratulations and gratitude to all of our staff across all of our sector areas who have worked so tirelessly over the last few weeks. In particular in the area of economy, I'd like to congratulate my small team and the people at the Let and all district council, economy staff who have worked tirelessly to support businesses in this very difficult time. And particularly as we plan for the future. Since the start of the lockdown, I've held weekly discussions with the Let board and with business leaders across the county as well as numerous meetings on video conferencing within our own organisation. As we all know, government announced substantial packages of financial support to business and workforce across the UK back in March. In Greater Lincolnshire today, £198.7 million has been distributed by our district and unitary colleagues to businesses. This represents over eighty percent of the total possible, which I think is a substantial figure looking at the national picture. In Lincolnshire, the three top performing district councils are North and South Castrated and the City of Lincoln, who have all exceeded eighty percent, so congratulations to them. Whilst other districts are lower, this is because of the makeup of businesses in those areas and is not a reflection on them at all as they continue to work very hard at identifying eligible businesses for the grant support. At the moment, twenty-two percent of the county's workforce is currently furloughed, which is where the taxpayer is currently paying eighty percent of that person's wages. Seventy percent of our workforce are working normally, as much as the word normal can apply at this time. However, the darker clouds are that twenty-four percent of businesses are closed or have ceased to trade. And for me, this is the greatest area of concern. Many of these are linked to the hospitality and tourism sectors, which are already going to face the greatest challenges as we move out of Phase 1 and into Phase 2 of the recovery stage after coronavirus. For the future, we are already working in the recovery cell in terms of what the future economy of Lincolnshire may look like. And it is clear there are going to be significant changes in the months and years ahead. This has been a substantial shock to the economic systems, not just of our country but to the world. And those ramifications will be fed through the system over the years ahead and there will be significant change. I am heartened to see the optimism of Lincolnshire's businesses and leaders. I am heartened to see that many are using this time to plan for their future and create sustainable models going forward. And on closing, I would just like to congratulate yourself Leader and Councillor Davis and the people around IT. We have had for the first time to do something in real time, which is to test whether Lincolnshire could stand up and work with future technology. And I think we have come through that test pretty well today. Thank you Leader.
Thank you Councillor Davy. So I now move on to Councillor Davis, who is responsible for highways, IT and transport. Thank you.
Well, good morning everybody. In terms of day-to-day highways maintenance, we have adapted quite carefully to the social distancing rules. And despite the implementation of the new Highways 2020 contract, which went live on the 1st of April, arguably the worst possible time, the ongoing maintenance continues to be delivered well. We've got gangs across the county delivering pothole and emergency services, really to keep the network operational. In terms of highways capital projects, after initial delays, I'm pleased to be able to report that both the Rugby Club Junction at Sleaford and the A46 roundabout projects will soon be back up and running. Essential piece of investment for the county that will help keep us moving as and when we stop to move around a little bit more. In terms of other major projects, Lincoln Eastern Bypass and Grantham Southern Relief Road are moving ahead well. There have been some issues around the supply chain and I think if this particular set of circumstances continues for an awful lot further, we are going to see problems around access to materials as much as anything else. I'm hoping the government is going to start relaxing some of the restrictions about, around the construction industry very shortly. That should make that considerably easier. In terms of public transport, we are supporting the public transport on top of, I mean inclusive of the government scheme, providing subsidy support to operators. As Councillor Bradwell has already alluded to, a lot of the school contracts aren't operational and we are repositioning resources and where possible helping to subsidise services and businesses to keep them running because it's essential that once we are able to start moving again, we have the companies and the assets in place to be able to do that. On a slightly more darker note, we are seeing issues around speeding and accidents in the county. There are less cars on the road and the Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership are working very hard with a communications campaign to try and encourage people to slow down. And doubtably, with less cars on the road, people are occasionally perhaps going a little bit faster than they should do and that is undoubtedly dangerous. Councillor Davy has already alluded to the IT situation and I do pay tribute to the IT team here at Lincolnshire County Council for speeding up the role of both Microsoft Teams which we're using today to communicate, but also the VPN services. It's enabling a large percentage of people to work remotely and that of course wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for the work of the On Lincolnshire project over the last six or seven years, which has seen super fast broadband rolled out to a large number of premises, houses and businesses around the county. And I'm hoping that's going some way to keeping people up and running. That's all, everything from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much Councillor Davis. So I'll now move on to Councillor Eddie Poll, who is responsible for waste and flooding. Thank you. Commercial and, thank you, thank you Councillor Poll.
Yeah, I think it's commercial environmental management you were.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good day everybody. I think the biggest part of my portfolio has been under pressure during the current circumstances. It's obviously been the waste part. And I have to say the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership has worked exceptionally well. And my thanks to all colleagues in the collection authorities and indeed in the senior office working group who have managed to keep services running pretty much as best they can. We've managed to maintain wreckage and recycling collections across the piece and it's been quite a struggle at times, particularly in the early days when people were self-isolating and we were sure staff to man the lorries. I'm pleased to say all the collection authorities now operate their boggy waste collection service again, so that's good. So if anybody, any members of the public are listening, if you have British sofas or something like that to give it up, please ring your local authority and they'll come and take it away. I know there's a fee but that's the way it is I'm afraid. Other than that, unfortunately we had to close the household waste recycling centres, everybody knows. And there have been questions as to why we closed and North and North East didn't. I think the question is really rather, why did North and North East Lincolnshire choose to ignore government advice and allow people to make unnecessary journeys to the tip and break the social distance and regulations etcetera, etcetera. That's a question you need to ask them. I know why we closed and as did all the other local authorities but about a hundred miles of us, we closed to try and help control the virus, to prevent unnecessary contact with people and to, what's the mantra? Stay home, protect the NHS and save lives. So that's why we closed. And I think it's perhaps the situation in cases in Lincolnshire shows that that has been really quite successful. I know it was inconvenient for both but thanks to all those who complied and who are still complying. We know doing our best to make sure that the tips come back online as soon as possible. That will be within the next week or two, but before that the booking system will be open. And I know there's been a little bit of confusion over this weekend where people thought the booking system was up and running. It's not yet. The booking system details and the phone numbers have been published but the systems aren't online yet. We know in the process of running them, testing them to make sure that when we do open those to public access, they don't fall over. So a little bit more patience please. They should be open hopefully around the weekend or very early part of next week. And then tip reopening will follow very closely on beyond that. When the tips do reopen, things will be different. You will be required to make a book, an appointment. If you haven't got an appointment and you turn up, you'll be turned away. Please do not come to the tips, your local tip only. Please do not come if you don't have an appointment. If you do have an appointment and you come, you'll be asked to bring only garden waste and wood. Now we need to limit the streams to those two. Both are inert. It gives us a chance to see how we can maintain social distancing rules on site, keeping the staff of the sites and yourselves safe. So if that works well, then we're hoping to be able to extend those waste streams, probably on the 1st of June I thought, somewhere like that, to include cardboard and scrap metal. Again, both inert materials, both in demand. So if things go well and people maintain the rules and play the game, we'll be able to keep the tips open. If they don't, I'm sure we'll have to close it because of the social distancing regulations or because of the traffic issues that are being caused. So please, make sure you have an appointment, bring only the appropriate materials, bring an ID and proof of address. We don't want people, don't come in a van or with a trailer or with a pickup. All those things are necessary to make sure that we can operate a service that enables you to dispose of your refuse safely, cleanly, that we can get rid of, we don't cause traffic problems. And if all that works, then we'll be able to maintain tip opening. And if it doesn't, I'm afraid we'll have to close again. So that's kind of the way it is. On the back of all that, I would like to say a very big thank you to our contractors and staff, to the staff at LCC who have been in constant negotiation, discussion, trying to find ways of safe operation in unprecedented times. And I think it's a tribute to everybody that we've managed to achieve this now. And hopefully we won't be suffering the traffic problems that many other regions across the country have suffered when they just opened the tips fully nearly. They have the thought of sitting in the traffic queue all day to tip your refuse at the tip and then when you get to the gate you find it's been closed half an hour. It fills me with dread. We don't want that to happen in Lincolnshire and it won't happen if everybody plays the game. So thanks very much and that's about it Leader. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. So next on list is Councillor Woolley, who is the Executive Councillor for NHS Liaison and Community Engagement.
Thank you very much indeed Leader. Well, you and the Deputy Leader have touched on some of the points around the community and relationships with our other organisations. But I'm delighted to say that very soon after this emergency was declared, we'd got over four hundred community groups that were up and running. And within those groups were over six thousand volunteers. And so together with the LRF and our partners and district councils, we were able to provide welfare calls to the vulnerable. Food parcels were delivered and of course prescriptions were collected. I have to say that the comment that I keep receiving, which I'm again very pleased about, is the quick thinking of giving funding to each of the councillors to help their local communities has gone down extremely well. Those groups have been able to get up and running with all the resource that they need and there's a couple of examples. There's a local Meals on Wheels service which has jumped from twenty meals a day to sixty and that was overnight. And so, you know, that money was needed not just for ingredients but for also carrying the food as well. And locally, the local post office was able to remain open simply because the council went and bought polythene bags for people to put on their hands in the absence of gloves. So well done to them and ten out of ten for initiative. All of this information and all of the good news stories we're putting out through a weekly newsletter to those groups so that they know that they're very much appreciated and certainly not forgotten. Moving on to the NHS, goes without saying, they have been incredibly busy working with our colleagues within the care sector as Councillor Bradwell has already said. And in this time, of course, the new CCG has been formed out of the four areas that we had within Lincolnshire. We now have the, we have just the one CCG and their first virtual meeting took place last week with over thirty participants. I think we must always remember them, but again, those key workers, those care workers and the job that they're doing in Lincolnshire and indeed the rest of the country, it's quite phenomenal. And again, sadly always remembering those that have lost their lives, both working in the sector and indeed the residents as well. I think the opportunities that we have, and the GPs have been highlighting this, is that the IT provision and the way that we can work with IT and embrace IT within health and social care is an opportunity that we simply cannot miss. Particularly for Lincolnshire being so big and so rural, broadband joins us all together. And very finally, I have to say I have a bit of a complaint but on a lighthearted note, my clap for the NHS on Thursday was a little bit too enthusiastic. I found that with a wooden spoon and frying pan, you could make a phenomenal amount of noise but unfortunately I broke my wooden spoon last Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you Councillor Woolley, thank you very much. So next I have, I have Councillor Worth, Executive Councillor for Culture and Emergency Services. Thank you.
Thank you Martin. So if I start with fire and rescue, currently we're in a very happy position. All fire stations are still available. Staffing is probably been the best that it's ever been. And that's a real tribute to all those firefighters across the county there. Other than a brief, dressed by in corresponding, they're now back fully doing that service. Of course, the corresponding service is really appreciated particularly out in those rural villages and communities. So that's really good to see. Twelve firefighters have taken training, driver training, helping the East Midlands Ambulance Service. And I know they've been busy since they've been doing that training to undertake that work. Would also like to say a big thank you to all those that have helped out at the Waddington Training Facility, helping with putting together food packages for distribution around the county as well. And finally, just on the fire and rescue bit, just a kind of comment for the public out there. We have had quite a number of bonfires to deal with. And just kind of a note to say that please be careful and think about your neighbours. We've had a number that have caught fire to neighbouring hedges, sheds etcetera. So just particularly when the weather's going to be nice for a few days, just be a bit thoughtful of your neighbours there. And moving on to coroner's service, clearly there's been a backlog with inquests that will inevitably be delayed. But we have got plans in place to catch up with that as quickly as we can once we're through this crisis. However, I should say that quite a number of inquests where the family don't need to attend or have said they don't need to attend can be done via the coroner in his office with what is known as a documentary inquest and that obviously will speed the process through considerably. Regarding registrars, a big thank you again to all the registrars who have been working either from home or from the office over the last few weeks. Just to say really register, people registering births, you don't need to do that within six weeks. So that's kind of helpful. And the registrar's office are only accepting appointments for the registrar, registration of deaths. Regarding libraries, I've had some massive successes here with ebooks, e-magazine loans, which have been up by 81% on the previous year. Audio books loans have increased by 28%, music downloads by 65%. So a really great uptake on this and a massive number of people who have been joining the library service to take the most of all these free facilities. Mobile libraries were grounded during this pro, this crisis. However, it's really important to say that the mobile library staff have done an absolutely fantastic job of keeping in touch with particularly some of the more vulnerable customers out there, phoning them up, checking how they're feeling, dealing and, and dealing with their kind of isolation and loneliness. That's a really appreciated service. So thank you to all those librarians who have really put themselves out to do that. Heritage side, all sites were obviously closed from the 18th of March. They are planning, or is planned for a virtual VE day coming up. And nice to say the Lincoln Castle are taking part in the BBC's museums from home. And finally, the Usher Gallery, things haven't stopped. There have been some useful conversations, a little challenging over the phone with a large number of participants. But options, basically the University of Lincoln have now commissioned an options appraisal for the future of the Usher Gallery with input from the Arts Council, the County Council, City of Lincoln and others. And we're now in the process of appointing a consultant to do that options appraisal and report back to us with those options. Thank you, leader. I think that's all.
Thank you very much for that. I move to councillor Young, who is executive member for community safety and people management. Thank you.
Thank you, leader.
Hello, Barry.
Hello.
Yes, ready when you are.
Right. Let's start with community safety. Things have carried on, notwithstanding all the problems of communication. I think the Safelink partnership is a partnership which really does have probably more meetings than any other. Because there are all sorts of specialist subgroups dealing with particular areas. Notwithstanding the fact that we can't have our meetings face to face, we've done quite well. It could be better. We've done quite well with virtual meetings such as this one. And I think we've learned quite a few lessons about how a switch going forward to more and more of these virtual meetings is desirable. The really great work that's been going on since lockdown is in areas where people desperately need help. You would not believe how vile individual crooks can be. And we have really started a war on scams. They're trying to call people on their money, access into their bank accounts, goodness knows what else. There's an awful lot of literature around, posters and what have you. And distribution is, is difficult with real paper. But if, if you have got access to online, I'm sure you will navigate your way around. That's actually what we are doing. Domestic abuse is another area where it's quite often a spike at times like Christmas where people are living very closely together. But of course with lockdown, there's absolutely no choice. Be patient if it escapes out of the room, but the government's been very afraid that there will be a big rise in domestic abuse. We're not seeing that in Lincolnshire. But we are spending awful lot of time, resources in explaining to people what the signs of abuse are. And really trying to encourage people to turn to others for help. Nick, Nick Worth just talked about fire and rescue. We overlapped to an extent there. Boots, chemists, I ought to mention, with that on the back too. Domestic abuse, one of the biggest problems is getting people to put it. Boots have now started a system whereby what until now have been consultation rooms for advice that doesn't necessarily need doctor. They've been turned into rooms where you can have a private chat with a professional person. Human resources, people management. Most of the work, a lot of work that's going on nowadays is supporting employees. People have adapted incredibly quickly, as has been mentioned by various speakers already, to even life under media such as we use in today. Still have been redirected to other jobs. And I really can't praise people enough for dealing with the disruption in such a good way. And the only other thing is legal. Where I have responsibility for smooth operation of the outfit. There is no doubt that there have been changes there as well. Some of the teamwork is being not exactly beside, but, but there are other priorities sometimes, such as making sure that what we're doing in the way of virtual meetings is, is legal. I believe our legislation, leather or anything like this. That's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Young. That's very good. And thank you. Could I also thank all of you, all my fellow executive members for all the, I know you've all been working very hard. And I thought it was, although it has taken half an hour or so, but I think it's very important that everybody appreciated all the work which not only you have done, but the council have done. And what a big operation this is to actually make sure we keep services going, but also respond to the current crisis. In terms of my own portfolio, portfolio area of finance, it is quite clear that we have extra money from government, which is obviously badly needed. And we are in the process of making sure that money goes to where it is needed. For example, in terms of supporting the care homes with additional costs and other areas where we need to find support and do new things like make sure we are supporting the NHS where possible to make sure the services continue. And in terms of property, again, some work's gone on recently in various arenas to make sure that we are, we have the property facilities available again to respond to any additional calls on, on demand due to the coronavirus. And in communications, obviously, we are also taking the opportunity to try as best as we can to keep people informed through the various media. And a lot of work has gone on in terms of that, making sure that not only partners know what we're doing, but also councillors and other people and MPs and other partners as well. So we all know what we're doing and people are aware and can obviously can input into the situation. So having finished that, then I will now move on to agenda item four, which is the minutes of the meeting of the executive held on the third of March of this year. I have read them and I am content they are true and accurate record. So I would now suggest that if everybody else, unless, has anybody got any objections or changes they wish to make, and I'll just stay silent for a few moments so that people can intervene if they so desire. So I'll take it. Hello? Did somebody want to come in there? No? Okay. So I'll then, I will then, I will then sign these as a true and accurate record in the absence of any, any challenge to that. So I will do that after the meeting or on our new proposal of doing it remotely. So I'll then, I'll then move on to the first substantive item for this executive, which is the Post 16 Transport Policy and Statement 2020 to 2021. And I'll hand back over to councillor Bradwell, who is the relevant portfolio holder. Councillor Bradwell?
Sorry, sorry. I put it on and then it's jumped off. Sorry. Not good at IT. Yes, we've got the Post 16 Transport Strategy Statement to agree today. This has to be agreed annually by the council and was at overview and scrutiny last week where they had a very discussion, a very good discussion about the proposal and did agree that, they've agreed that we should go forward with this. I just wanted to say a little bit about the Post 16 transport that we provide. It is something that councils don't have to provide. We in Lincolnshire think that it is very necessary because we're one of the largest rural counties in the country. And we all know that in some areas, public transport is, is, is not even, you know, not there. So we do believe that we do have a duty to help young people and have the opportunity to continue their education when they get to 16. And whether that's in a sixth form or whether that's to college, this transport does help young people to go on to do further education, which can only be good for those young people. The council also doesn't receive any specific funding from government for school transport. And our total school transport budget is around 25 million. And the Post 16 transport bit of that is 3 million. We have for a number of years now asked for parents to make a contribution to this, to the transport fees. And for the last three years, the fee's not been changed at £570. Obviously, as I said, the overview and scrutiny did discuss this. It gave a large number of very, very good questions that myself and officers answered. And I do think this has been thoroughly scrutinised by our other members of the council. So with that, Mr Chairman, I'll hand over to the officers just to go through the paper for my colleagues on the executive.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Charlotte Gray and I'm the acting head of service for children strategic commissioning. As councillor Bradwell has already spoken about, the purpose of the report is to seek executive support of the recommendations that the Post 16 Education Transport Policy Statement for 202021 is approved. And also that the contribution that we ask parents and students to pay of £570 per pupil per year is continued at the same rate for this year. We are not proposing any changes to the policy document itself. The council does have a number of statutory duties around education and Post 16 learning in particular. We need, we must promote the effective participation in Post 16 learning. We have to publish a Post 16 transport policy every year by the end of May, and it must meet Department for Education statutory guidance. The council has a duty to ensure that learners are able to access learning and that if support for access is required, that it will be assessed and provided. As of March 2020, there were 1,885 Post 16 learners who were travelling under the council's Post 16 policy. As councillor Bradwell has said, there isn't a specific duty to directly provide transport. However, given that we are a rural authority in line with most other rural authorities, we do provide some further assistance to help learners access their education. In Lincolnshire, the network of transport though for Post 16 learners doesn't just include what the council subsidises, it also includes the wider public transport network. Education providers also provide transport directly themselves for learners. And they also offer bursary funding to Post 16 learners if they can demonstrate a low income. The council spends £3 million a year on transport for Post 16 learners. The, the charge that is made provides a million pounds' worth of income to the council. So in real terms, that means that the council subsidises transport to the tune of around £2 million a year. The charge, whilst not small, is certainly competitive with public transport charges. And the report sets out a table on page 13, which hopefully demonstrates that to you. The fee hasn't been increased for three years despite the costs of transport increasing. And Lincolnshire's charge is certainly comparable with other rural local authorities and is often significantly lower. The flat rate charge for all Post 16 learners helps ensure an equity of access, regardless of where people live in the county. It's proposed, obviously, as discussed, that there's no continuation, sorry, there's no increase in the contribution this year again. The policy itself, there are no changes proposed, but a consultation has taken place. Direct contact was made with 2,970 relevant stakeholders, as well as being open to the general public to respond to. Eighty-eight responses were received, which indicates that 97% of those consulted directly did not raise any issues with the policy. Of the issues raised, these are set out in the report more in full, but key issues included people wanting free transport for Post 16 learners. There's often a misunderstanding that the raising of the participation age means that young people must stay on in education, at school or college until they're 18. However, that's not the case. Young people can participate in other forms of learning, such as apprenticeships, for example. And the Department for Education is very clear that local authorities can charge for, for transport. Another issue raised was around wanting more choice of sixth form or colleges that young people can be transported to. However, we feel that the policy does allow a good choice for young people. And many providers, as I've already said, offer direct transport themselves to attract learners to their establishments. If the council was to offer a wider choice, then the cost would certainly increase. This was previously part of the policy before 2010 and 11, and it cost the council £2 million more a year than on Post 16 transport. Generally, the consultation has shown that the policy is widely accepted. And therefore we ask that executives agree with the recommendations that have been made. Thank you. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Charlotte. I'll now invite councillor Ray Wharton, who chaired the overview and scrutiny meeting last week to summarise the comments from that committee. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much indeed, leader. First of all, may I give apologies on behalf of councillor Rob Parker, who is hoping to return to normality by next week. If I can refer you to page five of our comments, the main parts I want to really highlight is as a member of the Children's Young Persons Committee, members wanted to know what would happen to those people who would lose their, who could lose their jobs and therefore could not afford the £570 a year. Many also questioned about sustainable transport, whether, whether they could use bikes or walking to school, electric bikes, whom I know there's going to be a paper sent to the committee in future. Also, questions were raised about refunds due to school closure and also paying by instalments. And I'm really pleased that Charlotte Gray answered all those questions satisfactorily to the committee. And therefore, leader, I'm moved that we recommend these recommendations.
Right. Thank you very much. So I now invite So I now invite comments from the committee or indeed officers, anything to add to what's been said. I think I did attend the overview and scrutiny meeting and I did go through this in some detail. So would anybody like to comment on what they've heard so far? Leader, councillor Davies has asked to speak. Very good. Thank you. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I just wondered if you could tell us a little bit more about how we ensure we get in front of all of these Post 16 people, to ensure they're aware of the opportunity for subsidies and how they kind of enrol in this scheme. I'm just conscious that a lot of them may not necessarily be easily contactable. And if you could just explain a little bit more how we kind of get in front of the students, that would be useful.
Thank you. Who would like to respond to that, please?
Can Terry Marshall, who's the Education Transport Manager, just explain to councillor Davies the approach that we take directly with engaging learners, please?
Hi there, Terry Marshall, Education Transport Manager. Just to answer your question, in terms of contacting the young people, when the consultation went out, we hold email addresses for many of the applicants that are using our transport support. So we made direct contact to current Year 11 students that are currently in our system through that approach. We also made direct contact with the Post 16 students that are also within our system using our transport. But additionally, we have named contacts with all of the colleges and all of the schools to make sure that they were promoting the policy and the approach within their institutions as well. And as Charlotte said, we got 3% response to that.
Councillor Richard, anything you want to, is that, does that satisfy you?
I mean, that's a good answer. I just, I'm slightly concerned about the response rate. It's not a great response rate.
We, that last year, we didn't take that approach because the response rate was also quite low. So this year, we've made sure we made direct contact with those people because we utilised our institutions more. We also made contact with transport providers as well to try and find out what schemes they're doing to promote access for young people. So we stepped it up a notch this year to make sure we were directly contacting the people that we felt were key stakeholders in our consultation. And still, the response rate was slightly higher, but still low. So we're taking that as a general exception that the policy is meeting the needs of the young people.
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, thank you for that.
I think Colin Davy, you wanted to come in?
Thank, thank, thank you, leader, thank you, leader. I think part of my question was the same one that Richard had. Obviously, it's very important that we connect to the young people that are likely to be going to education institutions and make them aware of the opportunity of subsidised transport. So I think my question has really been answered. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments from anybody? No, so I will then, I mean, obviously, in my perspective, I think, obviously, the, I think we have a reasonable policy in terms of trying to keep this service going in an affordable manner. And of course, there is the issue, which I think has already been mentioned, that each educational outlet does have a fund given by the government to make sure that in terms of hardship, they can use their own discretion. So my own personal view is that we should, as councillor Wotton has said, support these recommendations, which is basically stay as we are, not put the charges up, but actually just keep it as it is. So I will vote for that. So to, for clarification, there are two recommendations. One is that we approve the adoption of the policy, which we talked about, as the Post 16 Transport Policy for the year 2021. And also approve the continuation of the student parent contribution at a rate of £570 per year, or £579 if paid in instalments. So I would, I will vote for that. And I think Cheryl will now go around and ask for the votes of all of the members of the executive.
Thank you, leader. Just to highlight that the recommendations are detailed on page 12 of the agenda pack. Could all members of the executive please indicate if you're voting for, against or abstaining? Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Mrs Bradwell?
For.
Councillor Davy?
For.
Councillor Davis?
For.
Councillor Poll?
For.
Councillor Mrs Woolley?
For.
Councillor Worth?
For.
Councillor Young?
For.
That's unanimous, leader.
Thanks very much. That's good. Thank you, everybody. So we'll then now move on to agenda, the final item, which is agenda item, excuse me, I just put my video back on. Agenda item six, which is the Draft Corporate Plan Success Framework 2020 to 2023. So back in September, the county council, full council, agreed the new corporate plan. And obviously, what we're working through now is the success framework. Directors have all been doing some work in terms of how they will bring the plan to life and actually make sure the plan happens. So the first stage of that is to approve the Corporate Plan Success Framework. Obviously, there is events of sort of change, you could say, very considerably since then because of the coronavirus outbreak, which I think is also, as well as being a problem for us. Have we lost the link?
I think we lost Martin.
Yeah, I think so. Debbie, are you going to just take over while we're getting back?
It's a coup.
Yeah, thank you very much, councillor Mrs Bradwell. I'm happy to. So just to introduce myself, Debbie Barnes, I'm Chief Executive at Lincolnshire County Council. And I'm pleased to present the draft success framework for the corporate plan. So as the leader said, the corporate plan was agreed at the council on the 11th of December. And officers were asked to work up what a success framework would look like so that the council can understand how we measure progress against the four aspirations that are outlined within the plan. So to remind the committee, the first aspiration is about supporting high aspirations for our communities, ensuring that everybody can enjoy life to the full, creating thriving environments and providing good quality council services. The framework is broken up into three various different qualitative and quantitative measures. Firstly, the success framework outlines the high level narrative and the high level strategic projects that we need to implement over the next three years in order to be able to demonstrate progress towards those aspirations. And then the paper also outlines some proposed performance indicators, both qualitative and quantitative performance measures to again be able to track progress against the aspirations. There is some more work needed in relation to the performance indicators. Committee will see that at the moment, there is either an indication of whether we either need an improvement, an increase in the figures or a decrease in the figures. And that's because we're waiting for the year-end performance information in order that we can work with the executive to set some targets. So then, once we've got the targets, we would then be able to report at the end of quarter one in relation to the vast majority of the performance indicators. 20% of the performance indicators are brand new. And therefore, we expect that it will be quarter two by the time that we are able to publish both the target and also then what the actual performance is in relation to those new measures. As the leader also said, that obviously, since the success framework was developed, obviously, we are responding to COVID-19. And we are also proposing that officers go away and do some further work to make some further iterations to ensure that we capture the high level recovery actions that we need to do in order to respond to the challenges of COVID and the opportunities, I think it's fair to say, of COVID-19. So happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Debbie, I can see that councillor Mrs Woolley has indicated she would like to speak.
Thank you.
Thanks very, thanks very much indeed. Debbie, I think I probably might have mentioned this once before, but I still don't. Page 81, one of the performance indicators around provide good value for council services, is around complaints. And it says, number of complaints where the customer considers that their concerns have not been fully addressed in the initial complaint stage. And somehow, I don't feel that that reflects robustly enough how hard those officers are working in the CSC in trying to sort that and resolve that complaint out just over the telephone there and then, or when it initially comes in. For it to have to go to the complaints procedure looks like a missed opportunity to me. I just wonder if we could lengthen that up a little bit?
Yes, thank you very much, councillor Woolley. So what that performance indicator is saying, as you're quite right, is that if somebody writes to us with a complaint, then it goes into the complaints process. But as part and parcel of that complaints process, then early resolution is clearly the prime objective for those officers. I'm happy to take that away and look at how we can capture more, more robustly the information at the customer service centre to actually stop issues ever becoming complaints in the first place, so that we're actually able to measure that we're working in a much more proactive and restorative way. So happy to take that away and do some work with the officers in the customer service centre council.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Sorry about that technological problem. So I am back in action. Thank you for that, Debbie, for giving the updates. I believe there are various people here who wish to just get the chat up. So, right, okay, councillor Woolley, I think, would like to speak.
Thank you. Yes, I've responded to councillor Woolley. I think it's councillor Davies next.
Councillor Davies, thank you.
Thank you for the report. Two points really. One, Sue's already picked up about the complaints process. I think we need to look at streamlining it. And two, the broader picture of where we are now versus when we embarked upon the creation of this. I think in broad direction, it's right. I think what we do need to do is look at being a little bit more aware of what are we going to do from now on? And therefore, how are we going to do it? And how is that going to be different? But we should always try where possible to measure outputs. Because measuring inputs doesn't really help anybody in Lincolnshire. It doesn't make the car go any faster. And I just wonder if we can start quantifying productivity across the whole organisation a little bit better than we are doing already. Because I think in some areas, I appreciate it would be impossible. But there are a lot of areas where we could be more accurate about how much we're actually doing as an organisation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. So in relation to the broader point around, particularly around recovery around COVID-19, there are a number of issues which I think we need to consider and reflect within the success framework, not least in terms of how we respond to the demand that we haven't been prioritising at the moment, because we've been prioritising critical services. And clearly, the executive will want some assurance around how we are getting back to steady state in relation to some of those services. Clearly, some of those services, we will want to continue to deliver in a different way. But absolutely, we need to look at how we can quantify productivity. In some of our services, such as children's services and adult services, it is relatively easy to measure productivity. But I think in terms of some of our universal services, I think that that is a fair challenge that we need to look at, particularly as staff are going to be working much more agilely in the future. Actually, how do we track productivity rather than just presenteeism of staff? And I think that's a really good challenge that the corporate leadership team need to take away and look at how we can do that from an outcome-based perspective.
Thank you. And I now have councillor Davy, who I think wants to speak.
Thank you, thank you, leader. And probably a little bit more of the same in light of what councillor Davies just said. I think that the world we now live in is a completely different place to what it was two months ago. And whilst I'm fully supportive of the paper as it was written at that time and its recommendations, I really do think that we need to have a wider think about where we're going to go to after coronavirus. I think our world has been ended and therefore everything needs to be thought through in a different light. We need to challenge our old conceptions of the way things should be done and look at how we can use technology and use the measurement of outcomes for the benefit of our residents in a different way. Ultimately, there'll be a lot less money to play with and we need to make sure that as an organisation, we use the money we have in the most thoughtful way, but also the one which delivers the best outcomes for our residents. That means some of the things we currently do need to be looked at as to whether they actually deliver for the people in Lincolnshire in the way they did a few months ago, and whether they are necessary strands of our focus and whether they need to be defocused or repositioned. So I look forward to further discussions amongst us all and with corporate management team about how we move forward. I think this document is a good basis and a good foundation to start with, but it does need a refresh in light of what's happened over the last few months. Thank you, leader.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with those statements. I think it is fit for purpose and I don't really want to go back to start redesigning this particular document. But I think you are both all correct that the lessons learned, as I've said earlier, in terms of how we can do business differently and more efficiently and better probably is going to be. And I think the bigger focus will be on that, certainly in the early days of working through this document. Because I'm sure that just like every business and every organisation everywhere, there's what changes which probably would have taken a long time. I think councillor Davies talked about the rolling out of this team's technology. Well, you know, that happened very, very quickly. It was very admirable. But I think there are lessons learnt, how we can all do things quicker and more efficiently in the future. So I certainly think we need to pick up on that. I have councillor Worth, who also wants to speak.
Thank you, leader. I think, I think you've pretty much said it for me there. So much same theme, I think it's using, looking at how we, you know, a big thank you to actually their IT team for moving us forward at least two years in a very quick time. I think they've done a massive job there and it's shown what we can actually achieve when the foot's to the pedal and it's a really great achievement. So I think it is about using that technology as best we can. But also rolling on from that, we then have to obviously look at things like building some physical infrastructure and actually kind of question, you know, do we need everything we've currently got with the kind of technology that we're now using? So it's much the same sort of question. But I think we've already made good strides and we can, a very positive base to build on. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to contribute that I'm not aware of? Thank you for that. I mean, I think the only thing I would add, I think it is, the document is fit for purpose. And obviously, the senior managers and the executive are going to have to do some quite intensive work looking at the future, which then we can present a plan following scrutiny to the rest of the council. I think the other factor in this is obviously what's going to change in all the external factors in terms of other partners and what government will want to do in future. Again, I know those in government are also looking, taking a lessons learned approach just to, as the experience they've had in trying to deal with this bigger outbreak and what they, what can improve in the future. So unless anybody else wants to come in, I will then move to the two recommendations that we consider improve and approve the documents and approve the revised revision of the council's performance framework, which is on page 59 of the pack. So I'll now hand over back to Cheryl to go through the, through the, through the procedure.
Thank you, leader. Just to reiterate that the recommendations are on page 59 of the agenda pack. But members of the executive, please indicate if you're voting for, against or abstaining? Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Mrs Bradwell?
For.
Councillor Davy?
For.
Councillor Davis?
For.
Councillor Poll?
For.
Councillor Mrs Woolley?
For.
Councillor Worth?
For.
And councillor Young?
For.
That's unanimous, Leader.
Thank you very much for that. So that concludes the form of it. I'm now going to hand over to Nigel Wild, who will just run us through the, the rest of the, what we need to do. And thank you very much, everybody, for attendance, both those who are listening now and also can listen in the future. Thank you, Leader. Now close the meeting.